And before we begin, I'm just going to review the public hearing policies. Go through this real quick. Number one, you must sign up on the sign up sheet in order to speak. You've missed it, which I'm sure you probably did, sign up sheets right off that door. Number two, each person is given two minutes to speak. We have an alarm. When the alarm bell goes off, finish your statement. Number three, you can only speak one time. Number four, no deferring or giving time on the floor to another individual. You must speak on your behalf. Number five, no slander, vulgar language, derogatory remarks, blaming, or finger pointing. Okay? One more time, no blaming or finger pointing, nothing. Just refer to the group as a whole, or a statement not specific to one individual. Number six, no cross talk or rebuttal remarks towards another speaker. In other words, if somebody's speaking, do not from the audience start yelling and screaming at them, or making comments back. Number seven, everyone will remain quiet unless it is their turn to speak. Okay? So everybody from the audience, if somebody says something you don't like it, please refrain yourselves from booing, or clapping, or anything like that. Please remain calm and quiet. Number eight, failure to follow the rules will result in a warning. Number nine, failure to cooperate after a warning will result in removal. Okay? Couple of reminders. Number one, tonight, no decision will be made. We're here to listen to the public and get input. Number 11, or I'm sorry, number 12, will not be opening up the floor at the end of this meeting. So if you want to talk, the sign up sheet is out the door. The sign up sheet will be there until quarter to seven. So right now, you got just under 15 minutes. If you'd like to speak, sign up now. When you do come up to speak, please speak into the microphones, and speak fairly loud so that everybody can hear you. Other than that, we will be, we'll get going.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
For none of the crowd.
Oh, are they not?
Yeah.
First speaker for the evening, Melvin Davey.
Hi, Melvin Davey. As far as the term limits here, I'm for term limits all the way up. President can only be president for two terms, if there should be term limits that way. People who are on will say, well, we should remain on, in office at these levels because we have experience. That's a poor excuse. You need to change. We haven't had a lot of change. We've had, some people have been on the zoning commission forever. When the zoning book was printed in 1966, 67, it was meant with the best. But things have changed. I hate change as many, as much as a lot of people do. But we have to change. Things are different. We have to look at things individually. Some people don't like the 40 acre rule. I personally don't, because it's not done properly. But I think a good start to possibly get some changes would be to have term limits for the zoning commissioners. Thank you.
Terry Rosendahl.
Terry Rosendahl from Honeckirk Township, and a member of the planning commission. Thank you, commissioners, for listening to me. As far as term limits go, we are under term limits. Every three years, we're up for appointment, and commissioners have the power to either reappoint you, or get a new person, which is fine. So term limits are already in power. As far as knowledge and change, we're, we have to go by the ordinance, and there's no give and take. It's either by the ordinance or not. And we use a lot of past experiences on those, on those issues, to go by some of the current issues. And we do our best. We're human beings, and we're not perfect. I wish you well on your decision, and have a good evening.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Julia Masto.
Good evening. I question whether or not I can say anything in two minutes, but okay. Term limits, I am in favor of. I've watched a lot of political elections back and forth over the years, and I think that anybody that is running for an office like this should have a working knowledge of it prior to entering. So I don't, I don't take the idea that you need to keep people in there forever because they know what they're doing. Obviously, you don't sign up for public service to the people, I would hope, unless you feel confident in the fact that you can serve them. So throwing that one away, I see no problem with having term limits and having two, four-year terms, and that would be enough. And that would be that you would elect half of the members in one, two-year period, and half of them in another, those elections, so that you would have some steady and consistent knowledge working. And everybody wouldn't be coming in green at the same time. Other than that, I think we've seen evidence of the committee. Not necessarily. I went to Webster's Dictionary to see what the responsibility was, and they were very clear, that all commissioners in public services' first duty was to the people. So you shouldn't be looking for outside feelings, and trying to serve people from outside the district. Your job is to serve, and their job on the committee is to serve, the people within your district. And I thank you. I know you try as hard as you can. I know that you're all good and fine people, and I wish you success in the future. But term limits, yes, absolutely.
Hello, my name is Wayne Feldmeyer. I was on the township board for 16 years. I think Terry Rosendahl said it the best. This should be done, the commissioners should decide if they're going to keep somebody on or not. By having term limits, you could get the worst possible people on there. And you know, you have to, this is, this is a thing where once you make one decision, it's going to affect everybody down the road. One thing I remember was Dave Corcoran had me go to a Common Visions deal. Now, that's where the state spent $480,000, and they wanted to come over here, and they wanted to come down and take this three county area over, and do all the zoning. And you know what? Houston County zoning was set up better than Rochester's, Gilmore Counties, and Winona Counties. So when somebody comes in here and complains to you and say, hey, you know, this is all wrong, you know what? They should have been there when they had this Common Visions thing, because you know what? They could not break Houston's county zoning. I mean, that was the best zoning that they had. That's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Wayne.
Eric Johnson.
Hello, my name's Eric Johnson. I'm from Houston Township. Unlike what Wayne said, this, if term limits are not, I mean, basically, if you have term limits, the planning commission serves under the pleasure of the board. If there's any displeasure, you guys could get rid of somebody. Right now, the way it is, I mean, it's not an elected position, it's appointed position. You guys appoint them every so many years already, so I don't know what the issue is. I find it curious, all of a sudden, why, all of a sudden now, is there an issue of wanting to get rid of the planning commission? Because some people aren't getting their way, or, you know, we all know why. It's because of land use situations, and frac sand being one of them. They don't like what, some people are standing up for their land rights, you know, and these people, some other people want to take your rights away. So, I mean, if you get a bunch of people that are a very voiceful minority on this planning commission, telling what people can and can't do, you're going to have bigger problems down the road. But, you know, as far as term limits, you guys want to put term limits on, you know, that's up to you. It's your decision. But like I say, it's already, they serve at the pleasure of your, of your board, so if you, they don't like it, you can always get rid of them. So I think the planning commission is a hard job that they've done. It's not an easy job. You can't please everybody. And I think for what they've been going through, and some of whom have a lot of experience, you need that. I ain't saying they need to be on for life, but it's, it's not an easy job. And the more experience you have, the better. And people that are familiar with this county, and have lived in this county for generations, it's important.
Thank you for coming. I appreciate it. Oh, sure. Hey, Rick, anybody out there that need a seat?
Everyone's one of these, I think.
Okay. Just remind you about, I come, there's some seats up here, please.
All right, Marilyn Fromm-Fryer.
The involvement of citizenry in their governance is not encouraged when one is considering whether or not to serve on a committee for our greater community, Houston County, when said service could be deemed a life sentence. Ninety-six Houston County residents have participated in the Blended Community Leadership Program. They're training since 1992. Four different teams of 24 people spaced years apart for a week-long leadership training. As a 1995 BCLP graduate, I can attest, community involvement was emphasized over and over. Term limits and the multitude of reasons for them were discussed again and again during these trainings. The BCLP Training Manual on Leadership in a Healthy Community states, quote, "There are broad-based leadership structures in which many people can fill roles of leadership. The same people, or same group of people, do not hold all the elected offices, or chair all the committees. Instead, many different people fill these positions, and there is a regular turnover of those holding leadership positions," unquote. Having personally served on the Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation Board of Trustees, three consecutive two-year terms, which is their maximum, and currently on the Selkow Board of Trustees, which limits their board members to three consecutive three-year terms, these term limits with these organizations and many others have made it much easier to agree to share my expertise, knowing there would be an ending date to my time commitment. New members bring new knowledge base, new perspectives, and new skill sets. They also become advocates for these organizations while they are there and after they leave. More people serving educates more people about why and how things are done, as they assist in helping shape how things will be done in the future. It is a key ingredient to asset-based community development, where people are your asset. Having term limits in committees is one of the most basic tenets of healthy community building. Thank you for this opportunity to address the board.
Thank you, Marilyn.
Ken Jumper.
Commissioners, I'm Ken Jumper from La Crescent Township. I'm very much in support of limiting the number of years anyone can serve on the planning commission. I suggested in the next two weeks, anyone who has served more than six years be thanked for their services and replaced. We are at the beginning of a 20-year political battle over frac sand mining. It will serve you and future commissioners well to have a planning commission that will give you advice and recommendations that reflect all of the people in this county. I can tell you that this is no longer a county of old farmers and big overalls. This is a very diverse county. It is diverse in terms of employment, education level, residency here, cultures, and values, and the planning commission should reflect that. Half the people in Houston County are women, and the planning commission should reflect that, like the county board. There are a lot of retail business activity in this county, some of it connected to tourism, and someone on the planning commission should reflect that concern over tourism. Our county and our school district spend a lot of money every year on social services and education, which can be impacted by the land use decisions that are made in this county. There should be someone on the planning commission with experience and knowledge of social services and education. It's clear to me that about 30 to 40 percent of the people in this county have a very strong concern about a whole array of environmental issues. There should be a couple of people on the planning commission with proven track records of environmental advocacy. There are hundreds of homeowners in this county who want to live in nice surroundings, who want the scenic beauty of our area protected and preserved. The planning commission should have several members who reflect that desire. There is nothing difficult about understanding zoning or the zoning ordinance. If you can read at the 10th grade level of comprehension, you can understand the zoning ordinance. I don't think the current planning commission reflects the diversity of thought, opinions, and values of the people in this county. I think replacing everyone in the near future who has served more than six years would be a big improvement. I also think it would be a big improvement to expand the total number of people on the planning commission, from seven to 11 or 13. On some of these more controversial issues, it would be far better to have more people coming up with a recommendation than just seven. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. All right, Brian Lavelle.
Hi, Brian Lavelle from Springville. Thanks for letting me. That's my concerns. I haven't got a whole lot here for you, but I gotta take exception to something that Wayne said. You folks on this commission are not replaced wholesale, wholesale, one or two at a time, and whoever is new is brought up to speed. And the same thing could happen with the planning commission, and it should. We need somebody in our corner to protect property values, and health, and safety, and all that kind of thing like that, and not to represent the mineral extraction industries. We have a very important future to decide, climate-wise, energy-wise, how we live. This is not an improvement, not keeping long-tenured people that are in the mineral extraction business to the exclusion of the rest. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Mike Fields.
Hi, I'm here today to speak in favor of term limits for all the reasons stated so far, and only wish they couldn't be made retroactive in many cases. While the discussion is focused on the planning commission, let's be sure to include the Board of Adjustment. According to the zoning ordinance, any term limits imposed on the planning commission must also be applied to the Board of Adjustment. That's from the County Zoning Ordinance, Section 11, Page 49. Three of the four members on the Board of Adjustment have a whopping 55 years of board sitting, with Chairman Garland-Mo leading the pack with over 20 years. We hear a lot about the valuable experience one has gained after 20, or even 40 years of one of these commissions or boards. But, and I can't emphasize this next part enough, experience is not the same thing as competence or wisdom. It just means you've been doing something for a long time. In a letter in this week's Argus, David Alstodt, a former 28-year member of the planning commission, suggested three, three-year terms because, quote, "It takes a while to learn the process." Nine years? Come on. You know, this isn't rocket science. When Commissioner Showme took his spot on the planning commission, he was told to familiarize himself with the county zoning ordinance. He's been there less than a year, and already seems to know the ordinance better than others who have been on the commission for decades, at one time being able to cite a page number from memory when the chairman demanded that information from a testifying citizen. And this current practice of commission members being able to recommend their own replacements, that just guarantees a succession of like-minded individuals giving us the same mining-friendly interpretations of the zoning ordinance year after year. If term limits are imposed, it is my hope that the Board of Commissioners will not only consider a candidate's experience, but also that individual's motivation to serve on a board commission. No one should be appointed who does business with the people they're supposed to regulate and inspect. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mike. All right, Robert Idicker.
I'm Bob Idicker. I definitely feel that people getting a job and thinking they're married to it, and they know it all, is wrong. There are better people, at least as good. Give them a chance too. Maximum three years, and if they want to repeat it, fine, but I don't think so. And they can't be repeated, that they can keep replying and replying. I think that's wrong as well. You've got a good county, very active. Let's keep it that way. Give other people a chance as well, so it isn't just one-sided only. Thank you.
Thank you. Dale Amet.
Good evening. I'm Dale Amet, Money Creek Township. I guess I had a written statement, but it was too long, so I'm going to have to bring it. I guess we've had some issues in Money Creek Township, which I'm sure everyone knows about, and I guess one that comes to mind is a contractor coming into the area, applying for a pit permit, and not doing as the ordinance reads, coming to the town board for a meeting prior to that, which is required. And by doing, not doing so, of course, we get a notice that there's a hearing, and you come unprepared, and the hearing, not much information from either side, and the board still voted to recommend accepting this as a borrow pit. And fortunately, we met with you, the county board, and by then, we had somewhat more information, and you did deny it. But with much more research since then, we have found that there's a document at the courthouse that states that about half of this borrow area was defined as burial area for cemetery. So thank goodness we stopped it. And of course, there's, there's another, there were three pit applications. We did not have a hearing on any of them, but the next issue, of course, is the one with the on-the-fro issue, and I don't really know where the commissioners, people were on that, but we didn't get involved in that because we really didn't even know about it, but because of the way it's done. But I get, and we get the feeling that the commission board and the zoning are somewhat contractor biased, because of the way these things have gone, and I don't know if it's a board that's been on a long time, and a lot of people get a mindset where they, they can't get away from that. And so hopefully, the new people getting on, which we do support, will change that.
I have to cut you off, Dale. I appreciate it.
That's fine. Thank you for, yeah, speaking.
Bets Reddy.
Just a quick reminder, too, if we could, just try and stay on topic, too, about term limits, and not really things that happened in the past. Appreciate it.
Okay. And Bets Reddy from Money Creek Township. Democracy requires citizen participation. Without that participation, there is no democracy. For that reason, good government means working continuously to cultivate as much citizen involvement as possible. The more citizens involved, the more ideas and energy introduced, the more engaged citizens are in their government, the more vigorous and sturdy their democracy is. When, however, there are no limits to the number of terms one individual can serve, then the opportunities for other citizens are necessarily reduced and limited. Obviously, that is not good. It is the opposite of good government. When a person would like to serve, but knows that the chances of that are, at best, unlikely, that there's a kind of closed club from which he or she is excluded, there is inevitably a sense of frustration, of alienation, of resentment. Instead of a healthy sense of responsibility for our government, people tend to feel cut off and cut out by what they are doing. That's ugly and negative. Such negative responses, however understandable, do not produce a healthy democracy. Please encourage responsible participation in our government. Establish a limit to the number of terms any one individual can serve. Let others in. Thank you.
John Beckman.
John Beckman, Houston Township. You know, zoning, you know, is a relatively hot topic, and people don't like, you know, the rules for other people and not for myself, seems to be cropping up from time to time, that somebody should, heels should be held to the fire here and there, and, and the zoning board is corrupt. You know, I've read letters to the editor to that effect. But the point being, there's a fair amount of turnover on the county board. I, correct me if I'm wrong, there isn't anyone on the county board that's been on more than four years. Am I right on that? And so there's, through the years, and the, and the planning commission, and the variance boards have been reappointed by various commissioners, because there's been a fair amount of turnout, turnaround, turnabout on the board. So if they haven't been doing their job, I doubt whether they would be, kept being reappointed. You know, they go out, if there's a question, they'll table it, go out and visit a site, and, you know, it's not like they're just, it's not a good, it's not a good old boy thing, as I see it. They do their homework, and they interpret it, and they're human beings, and obviously, they're not going to please everybody. And as I see it, if, if term limits is what the county board chooses to do, what would be the process and the qualifications for people to replace, that has to be thought about, not just getting new bodies on.
Thanks, John. Drew Ferguson.
Drew Ferguson, Money Creek Township. There are many reasons for term limits, and I support them, and I have already spoken of them here and elsewhere. But what are the arguments against term limits? One, no one else will serve. I believe that you will find that there truly are competent people willing to serve. Is it possible that some of these have felt intimidated about putting their names forward in the current situation? Two, it takes too long to learn the ropes. Yes, as with anything, there is a learning curve. When I started my job as director of the Lanesboro Public Library, it took me about three years before I really felt like I knew what I was doing. That's why a six- or nine-year term does make sense. Three, it's just special interest groups who want this change. Speaking for myself, I can say that I wear a variety of different hats. Speaking for myself, I can say that I wear a variety of different hats. Just because I may believe some things does not mean that I don't also believe certain other things. I may come before you at some point with an arts-related issue, for example, I'm sure you won't like that. Four, if it isn't broken, it doesn't need fixing. This question may not be all that relevant if you consider what is fair and right and good and allows democracy to thrive. Just as there are reasons why elected officials have term limits, these same reasons apply for bodies like planning commissions. All the volunteer boards, commissions, et cetera, that I have served on have had term limits. On the other hand, I have also served on a board that had term limits, but where the rules were bent in spirit, and what I saw was that it did color the rest of the board members' reactions, because they did tend to defer to the authority of the longest-serving person. Five, a fifth reason might be not wanting those currently serving to feel slighted. They have served in good faith, and they do deserve appreciation for that. A rotating system of term limits will allow a good mix of more and less experienced persons on the planning commission at any given time, where the roles and expectations for healthy turnover are clarified. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Wexler-Mann.
Good evening, Commissioner. Sarah Wexler-Mann, Yucatan Township. On July 2nd, I attended and filmed the Houston County Board meeting. During public comment, several residents stood and expressed their concerns over the planning commission's clear non-enforcement of Houston County ordinance as it pertained to a CUP violation by the Krueco and Anza Green. It is unsettling to watch this footage again. The overall impression one gets is that the planning commission maintains that it is just too much work to enforce the ordinance, and clearly demonstrates their unwillingness to do necessary work in its simplest form. By now, we must all understand that in the coming years, there will be a greater number of complaints concerning air, water, noise, dust, and roads in relation to the frac sand industry. Creating viable ordinances that protect Houston County residents from this industry is your, the county board's current task. But without a willingness on the part of the planning commission to do the hard work of enforcing these ordinances, the county will quickly become swamped with claims, counterclaims, lawsuits, and counterlawsuits. I urge the county, I urge the Houston County Board to replace with term limits those serving on the planning commission. We need new faces, fresh energy, and strongly enforced ordinances that protect our communities. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Rich Shields.
My name's Richard Shields, from Money Creek Township. I would urge you to, and to bring term limits to Houston County. We've heard a lot of talk about experience, but if experience was the only thing everybody can learn, as I'm sure some of you are learning right now, and I think you feel competent to do what you're doing. The other thing is, is that with people who sit on a board for a long time, there's a couple of things that come, that begin to happen or can happen, that this is the way we've always done it, and it's worked so far. The times change, and sometimes what worked a while ago won't work anymore, and it has to be changed. The other thing is that you can all read an ordinance, but if you have the same people on, like the, the planning commission here, pretty soon, they begin to interpret it, and then when you come to talk to them about it, or when they bring a recommendation to you, you're not necessarily getting just the ordinance, the facts of it, you're also getting an interpretation. And newer people of rotating planning commission with new members would also get a chance to look at the ordinances and say, wait a minute, I don't think we've been doing that way. So I think change won't hurt. I'm sure that Houston County has enough people who can fill these positions and do it well. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Donna Buckby.
Thank you, Donna Buckby, Yucatan Township. I was talking to a neighbor a few weeks ago about term limits. He couldn't be here tonight, but I'll just keep my statement short, because I'm going to repeat what he told me. He said he was for term limits, and I said, why is that? And he said, even the pope knew to step down. Comes a time.
Thank you, Donna. Kelly Stanich.
That's kind of a tough act to follow, but I'm here, I am in favor of, of term limits. And there's obviously a lot of different opinions on term limits, and I believe we need to look at that and think, that's a good thing, because when we listen to one another, when we listen to a different opinion than our own, we learn something. Marilyn Fraunkraut-Beyer had some excellent things to say. I know at least one of you has been to the Glandon Community Leadership Program. Term limits and inclusiveness of a wide variety of people is a good thing for communities. Ken's comments about having the demographic of your commissions reflect the demographics of your communities is also a good thing. You know, a comment made by a county commissioner, county commissioner to me recently after a contentious board meeting was this, I just want to do the right thing. That comment has truly stuck with me. I think you all want to do the right thing. And lately, I've been examining what it means to make an ethical decision. How do you go about doing that? And I ran across a framework to use. It suggests that you ask yourselves these questions. Which option will produce the most good and do the least harm? Which option best respects the rights of all who have a stake? Which option treats people equally or proportionately? Which option best serves the community as a whole? You've heard a number of opinions here tonight, and it's now up to you to make the right decision. I thank you for your public service and your commitment to the community.
Thank you, Kelly. Deborah Dewey.
Good evening. I'm Deborah Dewey from Yucatan Township. Term limits is the subject tonight, the topic. One of the commissioners was quoted in the paper saying that being newly elected, they felt somewhat inadequate in appointing zoning and planning people. I have a suggestion, what about putting them on a ballot and letting general public elect them in their district? Also, if you're going to impose term limits on them, are you willing to impose term limits on yourselves?
Thank you, Deborah. John Dewey.
Well, after sitting here and listening tonight, you talk about term limits, but yet you say that the commissioners are the one that appoint these people every three years. Wouldn't that be considered a term limit? And if you've got people that are doing a good job, do you really want to say, you can't be here anymore because your term is up, versus putting somebody else on that isn't doing a good job, and now you can't say, you got to go? I think that the commissioners should do their job, and alter the people, alternate the people if they need to be, and try to just forget the term limits, and if they see that there's a problem with the individual, then move them out and move somebody else in. If you think somebody is basically getting interrupted and not following the rules, or saying, this is the way we've always done it, so this is the way we're going to continue to do it, shouldn't you be looking at that to be able to say, maybe at the end of their term, we will appoint somebody else in their position? I don't believe that we need term limits, I just believe that as commissioners, you guys maybe should be doing your job a little better. That's about all I got to say, thank you.
Thank you, John. Conrad Kurri.
Oh, it's good to see such a good turnout tonight, I want to thank everybody for coming out. I guess for my part, and my involvement with the land use, I've heard a lot of, a lot of people in favor of changing things up, you know, and there's many different ways to do that, and I think that we've come to this discussion for some reasons that we're trying to get to the bottom of. I guess I would defer to the wisdom of the commissioners in dealing with that, and address the process by which somebody comes to an appointment on the planning commission, and remembering that this is a republic, and I don't know what kind of training is available for people when they take that post, but in a republic, it is different than a democracy. And if you're sworn to uphold the Constitution, that's the Constitution of a republic, as it is in all fifty states. The big difference from a democracy being that in a republic, the power is inherent in the people. And I guess that would help when there's a decision to be made and, and things are a little foggy. I think some, some training and some education towards the foundation of our government would be helpful, and I'd like to see that. Thank you.
Thank you, Conrad. Richard Marcus.
Okay, good evening. My name is Richard Marcus, I'm, maybe I shouldn't admit this, but I've been with the Hoka Township, I'm in my thirtieth year now, serving as a supervisor at the Hoka Township. But tonight, I am actually coming as the president of the Houston County Township Officers Association. And basically, what I'd like to do is, is reflect some of the input that I have received from the members of that, that association, and share that with you this evening. And of course, everyone knows there are seventeen townships in Houston County, and within those seventeen townships, we have eighty-five township officers who are responsible for four hundred and fifty miles of township roads, and of course, there are over eight thousand people that live in these townships. So my township board reflects eight of those seventeen townships, okay? And so we, we discussed this, this issue, and I went around the group, and first of all, I asked if anyone had any concerns relative to the current planning commission. No one had anything negative to say about the commission, from those eight townships. One of the recommendations that we, we unanimously voted on was to follow an example from North Carolina, state of North Carolina, which does have term limits for planning commission members. In fact, they have what they call, I think some people have mentioned already this evening, three-three-year terms, with, of course, the commissioners having the right to review the work that those people are doing, and make a decision whether or not they want to continue them or not continue them in that capacity. And I think we've had some conversation relative to that by various people talking this evening. We also recognize that there is a bit of a learning curve, and that term was also used this evening, there is a learning curve in terms of implementing some of the rules and regulations that the planning commission is under, and so that's why we like the idea of the three-three-year terms. The other, other concern that came up with the members was that...
Mr. Marcus.
Yes.
Wrap up, we got to.
Okay, okay, the final thing I want to bring up is that if there is a problem with some of these planning commission members, that we recommended that perhaps appropriate training be given these people to improve their, their skills and their, their knowledge. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bob Ellins.
Hi, commissioners, I'm Robert Ellins, hello, how are you? I support the term limits. I've seen and been in front of the commissioners before. It seems like we should all sit and listen on both sides, and it's very easy that we just need to find the right people. It's not hard, they're out there. There's been mistakes made in the past, and let's not bring them to the future. Term limits, six years is a long time, nine years is a long time. There'll be new people that want to serve. There's nothing wrong with that. This is the first time that I've met some of you, some of our neighbors. How do you guys feel about being commissioners? You learned it, you're doing a good job, you're here listening to the public. So like I said, it's very easy to do the right thing. Thanks.
Arlen Pullman.
I'm Arlen Pullman from Mayville Township. Experience, I feel that experience is crucial in determining, determining the direction that Houston County planning should go, and we should appreciate that we have those who are willing to serve year after year. Just said that there are many who want to get on the planning commission. I feel that these many are only interested in getting a certain agenda passed regardless of, of the pleasure of the county voters. The present members have many years of knowledge of working government, many have served their townships faithfully. The present planning commission members are fair-minded and work hard to represent the best interests of the county. Their duty is very stressful at times, and they are verbally attacked by those who don't see the situation in the same way the commission agrees to. The members have in-depth knowledge of the basics of our zoning ordinances, and use that past knowledge as well as common sense to sort their work before them. Continuity and members who work well together are a big asset in getting these things accomplished. They work hard to promote health, safety, and general welfare of the citizens they serve. County commissioners need to look back, need to back the members in decisions of the planning commission, and we all need to commend the members for their faithful service. I suggest we do not limit their service, but encourage it. Thank you.
Thank you. Pete Peterson.
You have a very difficult job ahead of you, as it looks like. A very impressive amount of people that showed up tonight and to give their input. I think, I'm in favor of term limits, and I come from a background of, you know, earlier life, I was a history and social studies teacher. And when I look at that, look at Congress, for example, the House of Representatives reelects one-third of their body at a time. Therefore, the aspect of, that everyone needs to know, as much as they can possibly know, that's, that can be learned. All the people elected to Congress don't know it right away. How about the president? We elect our president, he has a term limit. He cannot serve indefinitely. There's a reason for that. You have many people here... You have many people here who have, in my opinion, shown they probably have an interest in this, and they may serve very dutifully if they were chosen for this. I must point out this. I've met before that board. They do a great job. I must commend them. They have a hard job to do, you know? I've watched them. I've seen the difficulties that they've had to come upon, because with my job as a realtor, I have to deal with this on a regular basis with box scanning. We, he then ends up going before that board. So I see the difficulties that they have. But give the opportunity to other people, too. Let other people have the opportunity to serve you also and to serve this county, because they want to, and they're looking forward to it, I think. Don't look at it from a negative. Don't say, "These people that are serving us now are doing a poor job." I come from a standpoint, and the people that I've talked to, we're not saying that these people are doing a poor job. We're just saying, give other people an opportunity. Let them step forward and let them get to have a chance to learn these rules, understand these rules. Because they're in a book. Anybody can read that, understand it. But then also, when you choose the people to do this, choose people who provide for you their knowledge that would benefit the county and would help the people. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Pete. All right.
Thank you, Gary Kruko, property owner in Houston County. I don't have a problem with term limits. I do have a, I think the timing is wrong with this. We have a special interest group with FRAC Sand, and I think as of right now, we need all the experience we can to get these ordinance into play. And if you do go with term limits, I hope that the board, the county board, doesn't do it themselves. They get the townships involved. We've got 17 townships in the community. You get one person from every township to help elect that person, so we get a broad range of people on the committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gary. All right. Is it Gretchen Kuhn? Is that right?
Cook.
Cook? Oh, sorry, Cook. Were you handwriting that? Apologize.
Sorry. Good evening, commissioners. I'm Gretchen Cook from the City of Crescent. The zoning board and the Board of Adjustments may not be a good old boy club at all. I'm sure that they aren't actually, but they certainly give the appearance of being a good old boy club, and I think we're better than that. It also, it gives the appearance especially when others would like to serve but are limited by a few or even just a couple. Democracy, please. Term limits, limit the terms and add some members. We need more, not less. Thank you.
Thank you, Gretchen.
Thank you for your time. I am a member of the planning commission, have been for a while. There's a few misconceptions out there, what the planning board that I am on do. Everybody thinks we are an enforcement thing, that we do enforcement. That's up to the zoning administrator and the commissioners to enforce the zoning regulations. We make recommendations to the county board, as Mr. Chomi knows. When I was approached beyond the county board, Nels Goldenson come and asked me a couple of times. And the way it was set up then, there was a, each commissioner was from a district, and they kind of chose people, they kind of chose people that had township experience or governmental experience, and that's who they recommended to be on this board. And I think if you guys do decide to go to term limits, I think that's a very good way to go back and choose these people because they have experience, they know what's going on out there in the county, and they are already peers in their township. Otherwise, they wouldn't be on that board. Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn.
Commissioners, my name is John Meyer. I am for term limits. I think it's healthy for the community, like everyone else that was in favor of term limits. There's a lot of, there's a lot of talent out there. Why don't we use it? It's, it's a broader, you get a little more broader horizon on your thinking, and I think that's very healthy in the community, especially as diverse as ours is. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we'd all agree that being a county commissioner is a big job. Many responsibilities and very diverse responsibilities. The reason a planning commission exists is to assist you, the elected public officials, in making the best possible decisions, especially about land use. And a planning commission exists to study issues in depth, asks the tough independent questions, and very much in favor of term limits. I'd like to see a very diverse planning commission. I would believe it certainly takes more than three years to get up to speed, because it is a complex body of information that you use and employ. But I think a turnover is very healthy for the organization. Changing even one individual in a group of six or seven or eight changes the entire dynamics of the group. And that kind of challenge gives richness and diversity for the information that you need to make good land use applications. There's ever-increasing complexity in the kinds of decisions that you have to make. Property owners are asking for very specific needs, and I believe your decisions are going to be improved if you have a diverse array of questions that are asked in the planning commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cook.
Good evening. Amanda Grace, Yukatain Township. I'm here this evening to show support of some kind of limit of term. And the reason why I feel that way is that I don't think there is a very good diversity at this time. For example, I've served as an internship at a design-build school. We do planning, and we work with zoning, and each time new interns came through, there was a new perspective that came into the school and to the place. And I kind of relate to that, to the terms, and it's a very healthy thing for the school, and there's always changes, and there's always new ideas. And I also feel like experience can't just be somebody who has government experience. How does one know as a board if you were to go out and hand-pick? I think that the citizens that want to serve and think that they can do it should be able to come forward and offer their services. And I don't see enough women or young people on the board, and that really concerns me to see the same people there for long periods of time. Our climate is changing. Our land use needs to change. And so I feel like new ideas need to come in, and a term limit may be necessary to bring in those new ideas. Thank you.
Hi, Mary Denzer, Yukatain Township. Term limits are a sign of a healthy democracy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. All right. And that concludes our speakers for the night. Final, final words, I just want to show my appreciation on behalf of the board and stuff, everybody showing up tonight really does help us out to hear what people from the public have to say. Couple of things real quick before you leave, just to, just so rumors don't start flying everywhere. I just want to make it very clear that the board, the decision on term limits and the conversations that we have, it's not directly reflecting any one individual by any means. It is exclusively about the policy and procedure as far as new members, old members, and how to handle that. So I just want to make it very clear, it's no personal tax on anything. It's policy and procedure, in that it's not a specific thing from any one specific agenda. I know FRAC Sand gets brought up all the time. It has nothing to do with that, never even stemmed from that. So I just want to make the record very clear before you leave, that that's not, it wasn't brought up because of that, it's not brought up because of an individual, it's just a policy and procedure thing. So just want to make it very clear. With that being said, I appreciate everybody for coming tonight, and I hope you all drive safe, and thank you for your input. And I will look for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Okay. Steve.
Second.
Second Dana. Any other discussion? Favor?
I mean, I...
Closed. Adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Dana, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Here it is. And for follow discussion, I'll probably hear you in regards to planning commission term limits from last night.
Those are really good.
Yeah.
I thought we were very, we all got lots of notes to go through and be important.
I had a guy, he stopped me afterwards. I thought, this is kind of a good idea. I'll throw this to you guys. He had mentioned, he said something about, you know, with term limits, that you know, the talk of, oh, you know, you don't want to have complete turnover all the time.
Right.
And he had made a comment, he said, you know, if you went, in the bylaws, it says it can be anywhere between five and nine people. He said, if you went to nine, and it had three three-year terms, and every three, you know, you have, you have three, so you always have two-thirds of the board would have the experience to go back on, so you'd only have, you know, which is basically like the House does, where you can only have so many elections up in any given year. Well, that would be kind of a way to, you know, we'd have three three-year terms, but then you would never have a majority new. Does that make sense? You know, you'd always have, and then with the nine, it gives you a few more people, a few more, you know, and so that's kind of something to talk about. So I thought I'd just bring that up to you guys for some discussion. We can pull it over and bring it up again, but anyways, just mention that.
Not a bad idea. Lot of good input.
Yeah.
Lot of good.
So anyways, get some time to soak on. We'll revisit this and go from there.
Any idea before we make a decision? How long?
Well, I mean...
We have to do it for the end of the year, for sure.
I would say sooner than later.
Yeah.
Especially if it's still fresh.
You know, I'm still thinking about it.
Yeah. And we can have some discussion.
Have people from each district representing, you know?
Yeah, and we'll have to maybe talk about that, too, you know, as far as if, you know, how does that, you know, how do you divide it up, or how does, you know, how does that work? Because right away on the bylaws, it doesn't say that it has to be from a district, so how, if there's nobody from that area, do you leave an open seat or do you just have somebody else fill it, you know?
We struggle with that on EDA.
Yeah.
We're trying to fill a certain area, and we can't...
And so then it's kind of you...
But if they're appointed by the commissioner, you know, like if, if the five people, if you have five people, and they're each appointed by a commissioner on their second year in, so halfway through, so they have a feel for who they're reappointing? I was talking to different counties about this, too, when I was at the AMC policy thing, and they had talked about that. They also talked about two...
Bunch of clear mic...
Oh, I'm sorry. Two commissioners, two commissioners on it, and then each, each one of the commissioners appoints someone from their area, and that gives you the diversity all the way around.
Oh, I see what you're saying. So if somebody wants to be on, they come to their commissioner and say, "I'd like to be on it," the commissioner...
Right. And the commissioner could even advertise out, you know, looking for someone for the planning and zoning, and that would be the time that they're appointed.
Yeah. We'll write this up.
That would be seven people then. There, you know, you have one from each district, and two commissioners is what you heard up at AMC.
Yep.
So I mean, there's lots of areas to discuss. That's why we're not ready to make quite the decision yet. Yeah, because there is lots of opportunity here to do it. And maybe it requires some policy study time for the board?
But tell you what, let's, uh, let's, uh, let me think about that. Let's, uh, let's put out next week, revisit it, and figure out if we want to, how we want to proceed with...
So we word it correctly.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we're writing it up right.
And it reflects for many years to come, so it's a real serious discussion.
Yeah. So, is that...
Yeah, put it up for discussion next week.
How are we represented on the planning commission right now?
Say that again.
How are we represented on the planning commission? Do we have a...
It's kind of a demographic areas.
Is it all in one spot, or...
No, nothing except...
I know, it's one spring row.
Yeah, yeah. So, and there's nothing in the bylaws that say it has to be from a certain area, it's just, it has generally been.
But point, well, your point is that we shouldn't have.
Or you have one from each district, three members at large, and the commissioner who got nine, you know, you know what I'm saying? We're having, you know, something like that. So we'll figure out, we'll visit next week a little bit. So if you got ideas, write them down and bring them in. Sound good?
Yeah, it does.